On that note, let's call to order. So just a reminder again to please speak up because we don't have microphones. So welcome, any public comments? Any one for the good of the organization?
And it's not a doma topic. Then I went to the Bessie Board meeting this morning and they voted to put Phase 1 of Chapter 74 reg that deal mostly with licensure and program hours. And so there's a couple of comments which I'm sure that you've been weighing on. And in the questions about admissions and non-resident access, that they're saying that that's going to go in a quote Phase 2, which will probably be put out the comment the month after the vote for Phase 1. So that would be around March 2020. But no, no other controversy there.
Anything else?
We're ordering wireless mics. Let's pretend to be.
Oh, very good.
So we want to do the superintendent's report.
Pretty short, no skills capital grant application update. Although we're supposed to have heard Bob LaPage, who's the Assistant Secretary of Education, says that everyone will be notified later this month.
If you remain as hopeful.
I'm forever hopeful.
I am.
I believe you. I don't disbelieve you.
Belmont, Belmont's update, next principal's report.
So may I take a couple of minutes? Our parent, Parentum liaison actually emailed me this afternoon and said, hey, what happened? Basically. And so I just said, you know, the vote was held last week. The motion to rescind Belmont's withdrawal was defeated 95 to 140. My takeaway is that the no side was a combination of several different motivations. One, will the school fill up? Despite this year's past experience of an over-subscribed ninth grade class, some town meeting members questioned whether this was a long-term phenomenon. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Warrant Committee were probably most influential representatives of this point of view. The Chair of the Select Board did not express a view that I heard, but I'm guessing this was a concern for him. Two, will non-members save the town money? My analysis showed that with a fully enrolled school, the cost difference between membership and non-membership status will evaporate. As the school moves from the current enrollment in the low 600s to over 700, there may be a short-term financial advantage to non-member status. In addition, rescinding the notice of withdrawal will trigger a make-up capital fee of $472,000, which will not be charged if Belmont becomes a non-member in July 2020. Three, does Minuteman divert money from other town priorities, such as the local school district budget and the library? It's clear to me that a significant group of the no coalition view this strictly as a zero-sum game, and somehow keeping kids out of Minuteman, either as members or non-members, will free up financial resources for other projects, such as the local school budget or library or both. I did not observe any of the library leaders supporting us maintaining membership in Minuteman. In contrast, the school committee and the superintendent were fully in support of maintaining membership in Minuteman. And I thought the town meeting should have recognized their leadership and obligation in supporting the local school leadership. Four, is Minuteman High School as currently constituted an appropriate public school? State Senator Will Brownsberger made an unusual appearance to speak on a local matter. He does come to report to town meeting, but this is the first time I remember him standing in line to speak as a town meeting member. He said that Minuteman's programs like, quote, robotics and programming and biosciences, life sciences, close quote, and sending a lot of kids to college is, quote, stepping out of their, meaning, Minuteman's lane into the lane of the public K through 12 schools, close quote. He said, quote, "The Minuteman School is a case of massive mission drift," close quote, "away from its purpose 40 years ago to, quote, 'provide something called Vote Ed' at trade schools, an alternative for people who want to work with their hands instead of going to college," close quote.
You didn't watch this?
Also, he said-
I watched it. I don't want to relive it again.
Yeah, this is what I live every day. Also, he said, quote, "In my mind, this is just like a charter school," end quote, "if some kids just want to be in a different environment, I don't think we have a duty to do that." Will did say, quote, "I totally respect that other people might feel differently." My own reaction is that we, the supporters of the motion, were not prepared for this, for Will's point. This point of view is not at all consistent with the opinion and values of the Belmont School District Leadership and Committee, nor had it been a significant part of the debate leading up to the town meeting tonight. Yes, Will had expressed similar views back in 2016, but since the 2016 vote to withdraw, he and others took no action to help figure out what the alternatives to Minuteman should be. He had not been part of the informal debate either during the work group deliberations or more recently, the outreach with all the other town committees on this topic. I'm not sure that Will's comments made the full difference in the vote, but they definitely confused some town meeting members and made the gap between yes and no votes wider. So that's my wrap-up. You know, this has sort of taken the debate in Belmont to a new level. I mean, you know, working with Jack Wyatt and Bob McLaughlin and the Warrant Committee, it had always been frowned about, you know, was the enrollment non-tractical at school and what the financial difference was. But everyone would say, you know, of course, Minuteman's the best place for our kids and stuff like this. You know, just within the last week or two, you know, ending with Will's comments, but also starting with another member of the Select Board, they were saying, well, look, what is our duty to provide this to our kids? And it just sort of came up in the last couple of days. So I think, in some sense, if it had been strictly about enrollment and money, the town didn't believe that the school was going to fill up, and that was their vote prerogative, and that would have been it. Now they've sort of opened up this whole new, this whole new, this whole new potential debate that could actually sort of carry on about, you know, families and parents and people in town pushing back and sort of asking what this question is about Belmont's, Belmont's breathing responsibility to its families. So stay tuned.
Well, I want to acknowledge all the work that Jim had put into this. So, and, you know, Belmont will be remaining a member through June. Jim will be remaining an active member of the school committee through June, so.
And we will see. I mean, I position this within Belmont as to make sure they have the information and make sure that everyone had their voices heard in leading up to this town vote. I don't think that I can do it again, but if this new round of stuff, you know, ignites a new, a new source of energy in town, there is a make-town idea. So.
Because for an annual town meeting, 10 parents of kids that go here could get a petition article on them.
Yeah, it would take, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's, so, I mean, so, so we'll have to see what happens. Will didn't reach out to me before the town meeting, but he did reach out after, and I'm going to sit down with him on Friday, so.
Oh, God, you are tenacious. Good for you.
We will discuss this during the next enrollment task force meeting to see if there is a way forward and if we want to do that. With respect to the comments by the Senator, I'm not surprised because my experience of the last now 21 years has been behind, oh, it's a great school, is often, oh, it's for those kids. If they don't, if they cannot fit in the regular program, there's a deficit, and we want to keep them here, both for money and for ideology. And he was, he does the favor of basically saying this out loud, the thought that some of these other people may be hiding under their other arguments. As far as the money argument goes, they may be correct. If you do the numbers a certain way, they're a little bit behind a little bit. But there's also some ethical responsibility that they choose not to take. And so there are those two issues. There's what I call the ethical lack of responsibility, which they have shown many times in this process. Some of these, I know some of these have many conversations, some of these figures. And the idea that they say one thing because they don't want people to think that they have, you know, bad or impure thoughts, but on the other hand, what they think is, it's, they're just not worth the money. And this is not a valid approach, really, for kids. As far as this other thing is Stone Age thinking, that this is, that basically, that if you're not going to just be a grease monkey pumping gas, then you should go to real school, is basically what he said. There's no such the idea of that in order to, in order to be inspired, to fulfill their academic potential, certain kids need to be in an environment in which they are learning is applicable to the real world, as opposed to those kids who are happy learning abstract concepts all the time, just because mommy and daddy says it's good for you, even though you don't have a real feel for it. So he's completely ignoring the fact that when you go to the right place, a student who may just barely get by in a traditional school could become a superstar and engaged in a place like this. And the ignorance is not surprising, but it's surprising to hear that ignorance stated out loud. But I guess in our new political era, that's just what we have to get used to.
And plus, I was just, I'm surprised he waited. I thought he was.
Might be part of a plan he was working out with somebody else.
I mean, I would just add to that, like, it seems a complete lack of knowledge about the local job market and the needs of local employers, but.
So one thing that I heard that night, because I did watch it, was somebody, and I don't know who it was, I don't remember, stood up and said, well, we can always reapply next year, and then we don't have to pay the $427,000. You can go back and tell them, I'm not voting for that. You know, and, you know, that really sent me over the edge.
And I had a big slide saying, last chance, because I do think that coming back in through the rescission process, where it's just, you know, asking the good votes of this group would be something, but to, and it would be to make whole, I mean, we would make up the capital payment. Anything else, whether or not there was a payment involved? You know, I mean, six of you have open town meetings, you know, I mean, who knows what I, you have to get through every town meeting, and you've got to get, you know, seven of the nine school committees. Much, much, I mean, I tried to make it the point, that's just not going to happen. You just can't count on it.
Because you also are going to need the members of those communities to go to their town meetings and support.
Exactly.
You know, most of us don't have a lot of people that are vested in Minuteman, so they take the word of the person who stands up in front of town meetings and says, so, yeah, that, considering that we, the rest of us, have been paying that capital fee, sent me ballistic.
That's part of the ethical piece.
Yes, that is definitely part of, what is your responsibility?
Lack of ethical thinking and ethical responsibility, what is, and I have to say that.
And what you're cheating your kids, you're right, the cheating your kids, that could be super successful.
And it's a long-term, I mean, I realize they would want to have two or three, I mean, some of the people really genuinely, you know, were swayed by Jack Wyatt saying, you've got to take a look at the past data, and whereas I was saying, you've got to take a look at what's going on now. And they just want one or two more years, and they just say, you know, you've got to vote now, you know, this is a long-term choice for Belmont.
Well, I think you did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Alice?
This is just an irrelevant historical comment, so sometime in the early 20th century in my town meeting records, there's a quote where one of the superintendents say, "We can't be making buggy whips in an age of airplanes."
I heard buggy whips are coming back.
Any other, any other comments?
Just, you know, just thanks to this group to make that vote even possible. I mean, if you had said, you know, you're out, then what would have happened?
No, I really appreciate your effort. I really do. You were a voice of reason in a sea of BS. So. You could put it differently in the minutes.
It's okay, I'll catch it.
Yes, you will.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, who is doing the principal's report? Amy.
Hi. All right. So first is admissions and enrollment update. So as of today, you have numbers in your packet for in district and out of district, but George gave me today numbers. So as of a couple hours ago, we have 115 in-district applications and 60 out-of-district applications. 19 of those are Belmont. So for a total of 175 today. That is much higher, and I can't give you a percentage, but it is much higher than where we were this time last year.
Higher than where we were last year.
Yes. That's exciting.
When is the bulk of the admissions, when is the bulk of the, bulk of the applications in?
That is hard to say, considering 175, I would say is the bulk, and we've never had this many this early on. Usually during like the holiday break right before January, we see more come in, and this is, this is a lot, but much earlier.
For Expo Day, which doesn't happen until day after tomorrow. Which, we have four, I'm sorry, I'm stealing your thunder.
You are, but you can.
Go ahead, no, no, thunder back to you.
We have, as of the 15th, the numbers for Showcase Day were 417, and we've gotten roughly 20 to 30 more since then, so.
So 450 people attending?
Roughly.
Students?
Students.
Just kids?
How's that compared to last year?
54 from Belmont.
Eighty-three from Belmont.
Eighty? I heard 154.
We're taking the whole eighth grade class.
Hey, you know, we need that out-of-district revenue. It's like when a girlfriend breaks up with you, you know.
They look really good. Absolutely. And didn't they used to do whole eighth, the whole eighth grade classes?
Not since I was here. Many, many years ago, they did. Schools really won't. We're very lucky to get them the way that we're getting them. When you look at what's going on in other parts of the state related to the Bessie meeting this morning, there's a survey that came out where it's asking us, us, superintendents of five or more regional vocational programs, what towns are not letting you in? They're being very specific about where the issues are, they're targeting, yeah. We're allowed to do interviews in the homeschool, we're allowed to go meet with the homeschool, so we have Gold Star access compared to other districts.
Yes, and Alice first and then Jennifer.
I yield the balance of my time.
What was the, what was the show for Sunday?
208 students with, you know, their families and whatnot, so 208 was great.
And is there a plan to have something similar, access to parents after the Showcase Day?
There's nothing planned for parents after the Showcase Day until we get to dinner with the teacher, which is down the road.
Which is after applications are in and after people are accepted.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Did you remember?
I did. I did. What I was thinking was, when Amy was talking, that strategically, it might be a good idea to, very soon, send the department a letter explaining that we are seeing these types of numbers and that the school as sized is small, because we were right about that. And they need to really understand the demand for this type of education. Like, I think the school committee would be proactively, sending a letter like that might be interesting. You know, schools don't usually think that way, but I think we should.
In the past, our yield has been between like two-thirds and three-quarters. Do you have a sense that this year's going to be different? I mean, are we seeing more, well, let me see how it is, would you lower the yield, or do you see reasons why the yield could be higher than that?
I think last year, our yield was higher than that, than it had been historically, and I think given the interest this year and the parents and students that I talked to during open house, a lot of them have already made up their mind or already had applied and wanted to just come and see the school, where this year, this time last year, they were on the fence more, and they may have filled out an application and subsequently been a student, but this year, a lot of people have already applied, so they're doing things a little bit backwards than what we've seen in the past. So I think that's a good indication of their commitment.
That might be a good thing for, you know, Georgia to sort of keep track of, is the yield versus how early, thoroughly they apply, you know, just for future planning.
We had that meeting with the, I don't know if we had a school committee meeting, when we had, it was just for interested parents of eighth graders.
Yes, we haven't had a school committee meeting.
And we had over 200.
Standing room only.
Really?
Normally, we'd have 25 to 30, and we would do it in the member towns. We never did it here because we wouldn't get anybody. We had over 200. That's real.
Exciting.
In the, in the package, there's these pages that say, sending school, and then event number one, but they seem to have programs listed?
That's for our Showcase Day on Thursday. That's what students have identified, if they identified on, when they registered for the field trip, which ones they wanted to explore, so they each get to pick two. Some of them switch once they walk in the door.
It gives us an indicator of where we're going to have, you know, kids aren't going to get their first choice probably. I mean, Culinary has 180 kids on Thursday.
Wow.
180?
It's very popular.
Is that smoke on there?
Anything else on admissions?
The community service trip to Puerto Rico, and I believe we have a presentation, no?
I don't know if we can bowl, or. It should be in the packet. The memo is something that we have to, if not, that's okay.
Puerto Rico? No, page 19. No, sorry, that's Puerto Rico.
It's like the office of Puerto Rico.
So we're going to be going March 28th through April 4th. We're taking a smaller group of students this year because the logistics of taking a group of over 25 students to an island that wasn't really prepared for us, were challenging, to say the least. So we're only going to be taking 15 students. We are taking five chaperones and working with the St. Bernard Project again. The funds for us, the budget is about, well, exactly, $19,500. We are charging students $1,300, and we need to offset the cost of the chaperones through fundraising. Unlike last year, we're not going to be able to offer scholarships, and we're pretty upfront with our students when they apply, but scholarships aren't available this year because the cost of the trip was more than we expected last year. So we need to make sure that we are able to pay for all of the expenses of the trip with student funds and our fundraising for our staff. So, yeah, we're working with the same people. We're staying with Voyager Villas, who specialize in working with volunteer groups, so our costs have gone down, but the cost for the students went up just because food and things, you know, you expect them to be less expensive, but they really weren't. It's pretty standard price and cost for this area, it's the same down there, so. Anybody else have questions?
Fundraising, what do you guys have planned?
So last year, we did cutting boards, but because of the move, it was sort of a logistic challenge to get that up and running. We're going to be doing this, the Culinary work, will work with us on our fundraiser and festival in February, which coincides with the carnival in Puerto Rico, so we will be selling there. We also have a couple of luncheons set up with local rotary clubs, where we'll be doing raffles and things like that. When we were talking with Culinary, because of the new setup of the school, we're not, we did a silent auction and gift cardboard, but because students don't really have access to the restaurant, like, they would walk by before, we have to figure out the logistics of whether or not we do that here or take it out to certain areas. We're working with Christian Vas, Vas, oh, no, Torres, I always say that. That's a red sock there. No, it's not that famous, but he's awesome. Our new ELM instructor, and he is from Puerto Rico and is working with local townships there to get us sort of into, we're going to be meeting with some local politicians and talking about what happened. But also, he has a lot of connections here with the Puerto Rican community and knows of some events where we could take our silent auction there and be outside in the community rather than hosting it here, where we're not really sure if we'd get enough foot traffic to make it profitable. So.
That's great. Thank you. Do I have any motion?
I will move to approve the 2020 community service trip to Puerto Rico as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I sort of wish there were a page to look at.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Passes unanimously.
Okay, there is a write-up on page 19 for the next field trip.
I will vote to approve the outstate field trip for the dual enrollment US history program to the Gilded Age Mansions in May 4th, December 12th, 2018, as presented.
Second. I have a question. What is a dual enrollment in this particular instance?
This is a US history dual enrollment class with Middlesex. So they're getting, with Middlesex.
With Middlesex, right, that's a dual enrollment. Us and Middlesex, right. How many from us and how many from Middlesex?
It's our middle, our dual enrollment program is-
Is with them, so it's all our students, but they get credit.
Correct, but they get their credit, yes. And we have, I have the numbers of, is it in here?
16.
16 dual enrollment students, yes, thank you.
Just a follow-up on that, this is really beyond what we would be discussing for this line item, but I'm curious as to say, how the fact, how is the fact that we have this dual enrollment, enrollment impact the curriculum? In other words, is this a curriculum from Middlesex that we have adopted to have this relationship with them, or did they approve our curriculum, or it's a little bit of both?
It's a little bit of both, more that they approved our curriculum.
They approved our curriculum as being legitimate for credit at their school?
Correct.
And I assume that there's a fairly extensive process for that.
There is.
So I'm trying to fit, what is the total cost per student? I don't know if I'm reading this right, because it's, I'm sorry. Well, no, that's three, that's only for the tour, oh, then, is it, is it the tour cost plus the transportation?
Yes.
Yes.
About $12,000 bucks.
No, each do. Any other, any other questions, comments? Any other, any other questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
It's that $1,200 entrance fee to the mansion. They gotta keep them up somehow. It's kind of daunting, actually.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Let's move on to the finance report.
Okay. The first agenda item is the authorization of prior fiscal year 19 bills to be paid this year. I shared this with the school committee, finance committee, and we see their support for this. There are three bills from fiscal year 19 that were not processed in time and manner and are now outstanding for fiscal year 20. Two of the bills are with vendors who provide important services that we received, and it just must have been an internal error on our side, our part, that they didn't get paid in time and manner. The third bill was a reimbursement for a teacher activity, but the activity was on June 26th, fiscal years of July 1st, and teachers aren't around in the summer, so it's understandable how that could have happened. So, the bills are for $957.37, $450.48, and $72.72, totaling $1,456.09. In order to pay these, Mass General Law requires a 78th vote by the school committee to authorize a regional school to pay prior fiscal year bills in the current year. Therefore, I'm asking the school committee tonight to vote to authorize the administration to pay the prior fiscal year 19 bills as presented.
Submove.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, as Bob said, I know we're fully in support of this. We also sort of talked about whether we want to connect with Allison Policy Committee about at some point, not an urgent thing, but whether we want to have a more formal policy in the book to help guide employees about, just how long they have to submit bills, so.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous?
Second agenda item B is the fiscal year 20 first quarter reports. We provide several documents for you. I provided a summary sheet as well as an expanded spreadsheet for the school committee to compare the fiscal year 19 actual expenses to the fiscal year 20 budgeted, encumbered, and anticipated balances. This helps us to identify any areas that look like they are trending towards deficits or surpluses and curtail expenditures as needed throughout the school year. The summary sheet with the column I listed has variance comments in there, so those are kind of like the obvious things to identify where we're slightly over, slightly under projections. Ultimately, we have to balance those line items, and hopefully we'll not need any major end-of-the-year adjustments, but we'll keep our eye on that. The expanded summary sheet, which is even tougher to see because it's got more columns on this small paper, I'm sorry about that. That document just is further expanded, and it includes, it separates out the salary and non-salary items over fiscal year 19, 20. So it's just a little, it teases it out a little bit more if you want to really look in depth into that. We also included the first quarter reports for the revolving fund account as well as the student activities account. And if there's any questions, Michelle and I are here to try to answer those questions for you. So if you have any questions about these documents, we'd be happy to answer them or look into and get to the answers.
Jeff?
Just a comment. In the future, for these spreadsheets, I would recommend sending them as a separate PDF in large format, so we can see them in large format on the screen. So I know that it's hard to print them on large paper and include them in the packet, but we get is a separate email with just the spreadsheets in it that scanned at a high resolution, so we can make them as big as we want to at home.
Makes sense. And I made bigger copies for FinCom. They also reviewed these as well, but that's because they were right there and we were able to make them quickly.
Yeah, so, I mean, we took a, we took a look in real time at it, and I think made some notes to sort of think about going forward. Just sort of draw, you know, in the far right bottom corner, you know, whether it's, on the one with bigger font, it's column G, row 91.
S2.
S2. The 1.7 million, and we just asked, you know, how much of that do you reasonably think is going to be spent? And I think your answer was about 1.2, which sounds good because if we, if we target a half a million surplus, that is gonna replenish the excess efficiency that we took out. So that was, that was one thing. And then, and then really, the area that I really want to dig in in later meetings with Bob is on R1, the revolving funds. The first one that the community had, you know, there's, we put $100,000 in from the operating budget, from the general fund budget, to support the staff, but the staff needs in this area this year are going to be considerably more than $100,000. So that's, that's just a, that's just a philosophical thing, actually, in my mind, about a budget. You know, do we wanna, I mean, should we be half and half out with staff here, but not fully, fully unfunding it? And so that's, that's something coming out. And it's particularly noteworthy because the projected end-of-year balance is $57,000, but that's, that's due to collecting $80,000 for next year's summer school without spending it, so. Just, just something for us to sort of think about. And then, and then the other thing we've sort of talked about is, this is still the last year for the middle school program? As far as any more...
The child.
Okay, of course, yeah. So, so we're just gonna have to sort of figure out how that, how that impacts up.
Thanks. Yeah, those are all great points, and again, we do subsidize community ed, you know, on the revenue, it shows as revenue here, but it's revenue that comes from the general budget. So that's always a concern, and like you said, a philosophical, where does, where should that go? Should that go in the general budget, or should it go here? So, thank you, Jim.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, any other questions for Bob on these reports? I cannot read them.
So would you, we're all set, would you like me to go to C?
Okay. I'm sorry. Because I can't read them, can you just like, what is it that stands out for you or not?
Oh, sure. So, and it's things that you already knew, so we did have to, at line item number 12 is district-wide technology. You can see there's fiscal year 20 anticipated is about $60,000 more because there was additional one-to-one computers that need to be ordered for about $25,000. There was additional networking that needed to be done. And there was some consulting that needed to be done. So those are kind of things that we expected to happen with a new building, and so that's why, you know, that particular line item is over-expared. There's a few others, let's see. Some coaching positions that were added, the new security, or the security contract is way over. That's probably the, one of the largest ones, you'll notice it says 88. It's line number 47, Security Services, but that's because we have expanded hours. When we moved into the new building, we wanted to expand the hours that we have the security service company. So I'm hoping when we go out to bid, that we'll get a better deal, so that will offset that increased expense, but with a newer building, I think you want us to protect it a little more and have the expanded security. So it's one of those things where we felt we needed to spend the money. That's probably the largest variance. What Jim was talking about was under 70, where we transferred $100,000 to the revolving account. That's an area that's just important for you to see where it's coming from, and then it's going on to the next sheet. Also of note is number, line number 78. We've been renting two of our minivan fleet. We've been renting them. This year, we made a final payment so that we could outright purchase them, and so now we own them. So, you know, those are wise investments, and as we look forward to next year, as we're working on the budgeting process as we speak, then we have to consider, do we start renting several more? And that's, that's something that I'm working with our staff on, and we're gonna be sharing that with Dr. B shortly, the budget for the next year. So those are some of the things that we can call out of this document that help us in budgeting going into the next year.
Thank you.
And the other comment, it's not on here, but the, I'm looking at, I mean, we have, we have fiscal year 19 done now, and the fiscal year 19, the teaching services, the 2300, was over budgeted by about $200,000, and we're projecting that we're gonna, that we're gonna stay, I think, I think, I think the projection is to stay on budget this year. So, or, or, no, actually have a $333,000 surplus there. And so, just sort of want to confidence that, you know, that we can go from negative 200 to a positive 330.
We're doing our best, and that's why we try to encumber as much as we can, so that we can get to the point where we know that's gonna happen. So we're doing our best to try and keep those in line.
Okay, moving on to surplus property.
Okay, item C. Again, I did share this with the Minivan School Committee Finance Subcommittee, and received their support on this, their support on this item as well. We have an antiquated milling machine, as described in the document, that was provided to the school committee.
Picture?
Yeah. The color picture came out much better. Sorry we didn't get to the color one, but it does have some surplus value. If it was just scrap, it would not come before you, but because it has some surplus value, but it has surplus value, but we really don't need it in our advanced manufacturing program, especially with all the grants that have been written in the past to provide the new equipment. So, school committee policy BN requires the school committee, by a majority vote, to determine whether said equipment is surplus. And tonight, I'm requesting that the school committee vote to determine that the J-Head Bridgeport milling machine, as described in the attached document, is surplus, and then the administration will follow the procedures in the school committee policy to dispose of this item.
Submove. Any discussion?
Is it surplus?
It is surplus.
It's surplus.
Yes, it's surplus.
Great.
We have some people interested in it, so.
Yeah, several schools have expressed interest, so.
For them, it will not be surplus.
Correct.
Okay, anything else? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to school building reports.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Welcome forward.
Thank you. Why don't we just take a look, if I can do this right behind you, is, this is just an update that we received. This is Merritt Road, obviously, if you've all come down it. Sort of like a superhighway, but maybe I shouldn't be saying that, but the lights are in, the road is in good shape. We did have a water main break, but that's been fixed, and the fence has been moved over to the side of the building. So landscaping has been in, some tree work's been done, so that is gonna be straight, if not this week, early next week. It all depends on the weather. So that's in good shape, and we're pleased to have that. That's our main entrance, as you know. We're not, Lincoln entrance is not our main entrance, and so this is our, we're going back to the way it was, just a little longer drive. Jeff?
So we should use this now?
Yes.
And will the new building open on time forward?
New building?
The new building has a good time. I just want to make absolutely sure.
Well, you're still wondering if we're on budget?
Still wondering if we're on.
No, we're doing just fine.
It's gonna open on time, thank you. Regarding the road, will the lights, will there be more lights added in this part of the road? I noticed when I drove in tonight, that was relatively dark than the lights were closer to the new school. There are more lights?
Uh, no. What you have, the lights are, what's there right now, obviously, depending on what happens with fields and all that, but that's the light structure.
Okay.
It's a country road.
It's part of the conservation.
It wasn't a problem, I'm just asking.
It's part of Lexington's order of conditions.
Are there gonna be speed bumps?
Jay chose how many lights.
Are there gonna be speed bumps? I have no idea.
We'll restore them in the spring. We take them out in the winter. Kind of messes with the plows.
This is a picture of the building with tree removal down, subgrade preparation stabilization is complete. So that's where we are there. Near the south end, as you can see, where abatement's been done, removal of windows are out. The only thing that we're waiting on, I may mention it in a minute, but we're waiting for Eversource to go through a 20-day period to make sure everybody's out of the building, and when they shut off the power, it's all set. So we're about ready to move ahead. On the north elevation, our januvate. Roof systems, the roofs, the systems have been disposed of and out.
In mechanicals?
The mechanicals are, those that are out.
Yeah, yeah.
This is our punch list. Basically, we have, just what it says, items completed, 295. Items closed by KVA, so they're done, 1,096. KVA is inspecting 735. That sounds like a lot, but they can do that in a week or two. And when you look at punch lists, it really is the big items are painting, and that's touch-up type painting, flooring, and that's just repairing some floors and changing some things, ceiling tiles, that's a replacement, and our, the door handles and a few of them need to be replaced. So it's a lot of little stuff. That list, 661, grows up and down. The theater was just about to be put online, and so that's what bumped it up by about 60 points. Yes, sir.
Where do we stand with the greenhouses?
Greenhouses, I will give you that report in just a second. The playground has been completed. The only thing that we're still working on is the sandbox, but by the end of the week, the playground will be completed and up, and it looks great. It really does look terrific. Greenhouse, complete the roughing of electrical and plumbing. Some equipment, we've waited for two pieces of equipment, one a control of equipment, and that is, I guess, in the United States, and we should be here shortly. So the greenhouse should be ready by mid-December, and up and ready to go. Theater, theater again, I don't know the building inspector was in today.
Yes.
Sounds like.
He had a couple of questions about the upper level above the expanded metal floor that our theater consultant and KVA are getting him some more information on.
It's not something that most building inspectors, I'm not gonna pick on Lincoln in this one, because Lincoln Building Inspector actually has...
Yeah, we don't have Belmont to pick on anymore.
I don't have to worry about Belmont. So that'll be online very shortly and finishing up. So we are sort of, Jeff, we're on time on this and moving along, and demo starts another 10 days or so. I'm actually gonna go through the building on Thursday, and I can't wait to see the vacant building. That's our report, everything's going well. Budget-wise, we're right on target. It looks like we will probably end up roughly $3 million or so on the plus side for our
Any questions for Ford?
Jeff?
I was noticing in your graphs, there is a one, it's in dispute, that seems to be the same size all the way across. Is there something significant, or is that just, it just doesn't seem to have changed?
No, it's being negotiated. They're talking about Griffin, the electric, probably now, the site contractor.
Okay, but it's not, nothing catastrophic?
Oh, no, no, no. No. And we've already accounted for them in a very conservative way with our budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for?
None yet.
Okay. Let's move on to the subcommittee for Ford. Finance committee.
We covered a lot of it through BOBS. But I'd like to sort of take this time to just talk about what's coming up. And that is the bunch hit. We will be here, we have a meeting scheduled for December 5. And as I'm thinking about it now, this is really going to be an unusual budget year. I mean, it's, 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 my first one was chair, it's my first one here. But more importantly, we have these good news and bad news stories. And Belmont going out takes their assessment out. And usually, non-member tuition is put into revolving used for the following year. So that creates a potential gap that would have to be bridged somehow. On the plus side, we are collecting $924,000 of capital fee, capital fee of revenues from the non-members. And so that's, that's there to be, to be used somehow. But the debt service, we won't know exactly until we issue the bonds in January. But Kevin's projection was that the debt service would go from 3.1 to 4.5 next year. And so that's another million or four to sort of figure out how it works. And then, and then just in general, I mean, we sort of had this conversation also in the policy committee about making sure the school committee has, gets into a mindset, morphing into a policy of setting aside enough reserves for, enough reserves for deferred expenses, whether it be maintenance on this new building or whether it's the OPEB unliabilities. And it's my own personal view that those really should be baked into the current year budget so that every town sending schools pays their fair share so that you don't get into a, you know, 10 years of not funding that stuff. And then whoever is left holding the bag of kids gets stuck with 10 years worth of stuff there. So, you know, and, and, I mean, it's a new building. We don't know exactly what the right maintenance level is yet, but we need to talk about that. On the OPEB stuff, we've usually been, I mean, for the last four years, we've given $50,000 in. I think something closer to, something in reality, probably closer to 500,000. And in any topic for me about finance, wouldn't be, would be complete without talking about section 10, 10 and B. And actually, we had an interesting but brief conversation in the finance committee meeting. Maybe a test case of us asking the commissioner for an extra fee could be targeted for an OPEB contribution. And if we said, we want to budget, say, you know, $200 per student, which would be like a, like a $100,000 payment there. Then ask the commissioner whether we could pay, charge the non-member town the same $200. And it may be a less controversial way of testing that legislative authority we have to propose a new fee and wrap it into something that's clearly outside the traditional foundation budget. And so, and so just want to toss that out for some ideas. And then just in general, any comments you have about what we should be looking at as this fiscal year '21 budget rolls out, you know, that the three of us on the committee really want your feedback sooner rather than later.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions?
An OPEB assessment for non-member towns. I love it.
Retroactive.
Or looking forward.
Yeah, we talked about other ideas that districts have had, but I thought that was super creative. Jim came up with that. That was brilliant. Other districts have used like retiring debt or other things to offset their OPEB expenses. So there's a lot of different models out there. Steve talked about another one too, Steve, where it was, what was the model that you were familiar with?
In my former life, you mean?
Yes.
We had, anytime we created a new position in the budget, we added an OPEB factor. It was basically the cost of insurance. And then we made sure we budgeted for that new position every year after it was no longer in the position, so.
So over time it would catch up, which was, I thought.
Basically, new hires were neutral.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
So a lot of creative ideas were brainstorming. It was, it was an exhilarating PIMCOM meeting.
Never heard that word. Never heard that.
Maybe you'll recruit other people to the committee.
Are these just ideas or are they going to be put into some kind of action?
Or they, I mean, they were, I mean.
What happens to them after tonight?
That the budget's going to be, I mean, I mean, we will be, we will be meeting on that. But yeah, I mean, the guy, I mean, the big message is there are some big, there are some big budget challenges for this next year. And it's going to affect your, your town meetings.
About the least of which is increased enrollment.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. I mean, I mean, the, there are some expenses going up that way. But the debt is a big one. And sort of finessing, you know, how much, I mean, do we want to take more from the current year tuition than the traditional 400,000 to if Belmont actually does really leave to sort of help bridge that, so.
And in terms of, someone said, you know, where do these ideas go from here? You know, that our next several meetings will be offered to have further discussion.
But are you asking the finance, finance committee to really sort of dive in?
Yeah, I'm asking, an idea is an idea, but I think it's going to be better further.
Right, yeah.
It may be a bad idea, but I think it's going to be better.
Yeah, I mean, and we haven't really sort of, I mean, we've sort of talked more about the process and the staff is coming up with the operational budget on the spending side. But we haven't, we haven't really sort of tackled the revenue side, which is actually going to be a challenge and a minimal thing this, this year.
Other questions, comments? Okay, let's move on to enrollment.
I don't have a formal report because we have not met. Do you know that expression, "May you live in interesting times"? Well, this is going to be the interesting times for the enrollment task force, I think, over the next few months. We have the new enrollment this year information we have, which will impact what our discussion's like. Belmont leaving will impact our discussion. The fact that the new communication director starts in a few weeks will impact our discussion. I think that we're going to be doing the majority of our work for the year over the next month or two in taking all these events that are coming up and coming to drawing the kind of a long-term plan on how we can tackle enrollment in the best way for the long term. So I think that this is where we'll be doing the bulk of our work the next few months. End of report.
The director's in five?
The communication director is starting, was it December 9?
Yes. He's already been doing some things for us.
Other questions on enrollment?
What is, what is the name of the inspector?
Dave O'Brien?
Dan.
Dan.
Dan O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien.
And he was here on Sunday, I believe.
He was.
Mr. O'Brien.
It's Daniel.
Daniel.
Too bad.
Okay. Move on to policy.
Okay, so don't worry, it looks like a log, but it's not. So these are all the same policies, basically. It came to everyone's attention, Amy, Jim, Dave, and maybe that ADDA, which is the background checks policy, was seriously out of date. And so what we're going to do is we're going to ask you to vote on first reading for a new ADDA and its associated Corey policy, which are the first two on the list. And then the second two on the list are in our book, but they're really old. So we're going to ask you to vote to remove those. So if you go to page 33, this is our recommendation for the ADDA background policy, background check policy. And the associated ADDA-R is MASC's version of the Corey policy, which actually is based on something from the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services. And you'll notice on page 34 that ADDA-R is referenced. So we figured you want to see what that was. And that turns out to be the model Corey policy from the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services. On page 37, you'll see the MASC boilerplate. This is the original document that we got. And you'll notice it's very long, six pages. So we wrote to MASC and asked them, you know, this looks more procedural than your usual policies. It's really procedural. What's up? And we got back a response from them that they, each school employer that receives, gee, I didn't explain what this is. You have to maintain a written policy that meets the minimum standards of the DCJIS Model Corey Policy, complying with federal rules and regulations. And so what we want to do is adopt the ADDA, one, the first one, and the ADDA-R. And then the school district will use the boilerplate document as their sort of template for their procedural internal documents. And then if you go to page 45, ADF-A, you'll notice that the last time you looked at this was 2008. So that one we're going to take out of the book. And page 48, ADF-B, again, very old, useless, needs to be removed from the book. So I'd like a motion to approve ADDA and ADDA-R for first reading and to remove ADF-A and ADB-B from the book.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, Jeff?
Yes, okay. Procedurally, do you want to remove the other two policies until we vote final drafts of the new ones? Or do you want to just keep them there until we do that?
What do you want to do?
To have something on the books from them at least, in the meantime.
I don't, I don't know the ones that are so old that we actually.
They're even useful?
If they're even useful to refer to.
If you remove them, then you have nothing for a month or two.
Well, we do have a policy that allows the superintendent to create policy in the absence of policy so that there is a sort of a backstop.
And we have a first reading approved, so.
So would the, would this be, the superintendent would then adopt, in the meantime, the two policies accepted for first reading as the current policy until the time that they're finalized?
Absolutely.
Okay. So my second question is just to understand this. So the key document here sort of is this MASC boilerplate long document, which is the only one I did not finish reading. I got tired. It was complicated, a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And yours was clear. So this is sort of what they recommend as complying to everything that anybody could ever want you to comply to?
Yeah, most school districts that we could find have adopted it wholesale. It's almost incomprehensible in pieces. We had a hard time reading it.
So we have that instead of adopting this as our policy, we have two things that we clearly and are quite easy to read and understand as policy. And we're having this as kind of the background to the procedures. You should believe that that's where it fits in better. Is that correct? So if there's anything lacking in these two policies that they would yell at us about? Because I must say they were certainly very easy and clear to read.
No, because we say that they are going to comply to all applicable laws and regulations. That the school district is going to follow procedures consistent with all applicable laws and regulations. So that leaves that up to them to make sure that they do that. It has to do with keeping records, notifications.
Yeah.
There's, you know, an entire, another building required for these records involved, I believe.
Yeah, so I was terrified when I first saw the extent of this packet. But then when I read those, how clear that policy was, I was, huh. So good job in, good job in writing it clearly.
This is a great team.
Right, I'm all set.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
So I have a question. Because the current policies are so old, will this require new procedures that you don't have in place right now? Or are you basically doing this?
We're, we're already doing it.
You're doing it.
Any others? Stuff? All in favor of motion on the table?
There was a motion, right?
Yes.
We're good. Okay. Let's move on to secretary's report.
That begins on page, the minutes begin on page 61. And there's one minor change on page 55, paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 5, paragraph 4, line, not notice to withdraw, but notice of withdraw. And Julie and I have already talked about it. So any other suggestions? All right, I move to approve that we approve the draft minutes of October 22, 2019 as presented and changed, modified.
Second. Over the second, any further discussion? All in favor? Abstaining? Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to enter executive session. Does someone want to make this very long motion?
I will make it.
Thank you.
I move that we enter into executive session as follows. Item 1, to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. 2, pursuant to purpose 3, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minivan Faculty Association as an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Point 3, pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, to review, amend, finalize, and approve minutes from executive sessions of the committee held on September 17, 2019, and October 22, 2019, and to determine whether continued non-disclosure of such minutes is appropriate. And item 4, strategic planning task force update. As soon as not here, so will the. This item is not.
She's not here tonight.
So this is, so scratch item 4?
Yeah, I would have recommended that anyway. That's not a reason to go into executive session.
So who will be staying? Who would want to have these?
Um, everyone at the table.
And at the table, why don't you read them out?
Jeff Stulman?
No. From the administration.
Bob Girardi, Amy Farrell, Julia.
And Ed Buckwell.
Me.
Not return to open session, is that correct? Yes.
Second. Okay, Dave, you want to kick it off?
Sure.
Are we both on our bulky?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Got to helenity, I mean, I've got to.
Steve will do coffee, yes.
Cam, no second, yes.
Jeff Stulman, yes.
Lee Horton, back end, yes.
Julia, no one, yes. Ford, Spalding, Dover, yes.
Okay. We need to take.